Hi, my name is Dana here at State Bank and Trust. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve you since 1907.
Thank you for allowing us to serve you.
This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gewin. With furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Gewin and Fayette.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gewin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck Spann here with Spann Hardware and Equipment in downtown Winfield. Hope you're having a happy fall. As we move into the fall season, any of your needs you have around the house as far as lawn cleanup, whether you need blowers, sweepers, lawnmowers to chop them up with, or just handheld tools for projects around the house, come see us. We'll help you out. Spann Hardware and Equipment, downtown Winfield.
At home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at 205-487-4327.
Hi, I'm Kevin Bradford, State Farm Agent in Winfield. And I'd like to introduce my team to you. To my left, to the far left, is Beth Turner. And next to her is Ann Barnes. And to my right here is Mr. Todd Estes. We'd like to invite you to call us or come see us at any time for any of your insurance needs. We're happy to help you in any way. We appreciate your business, and we look forward to hearing you and doing business with you. Thank you.
Let's pray. Most kind gracious of Father who comes to you tonight, and we just thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ. We ask for forgiveness when we fail you and we fall short every day. God, I pray that you would be with this government body as they make decisions for the city tonight. I pray that you would be with each one. I pray, Father, that you'd open their minds, open their hearts to God, and let them speak with truth. By God, the ones that are sick, shut in, the ones that have lost loved ones, I ask right now that you just touch them as only you can. First, in Jesus' name, we ask these things. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the good life of the United States of America, in this big republic of which is saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with everlasting justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 2018, 2025 council meeting, Winfield City Council meeting. I'm going to move the agenda around just a little bit. I moved number two to number one, number three to number two. The first item on the agenda tonight is going to be, we had Councilmember Ballard and Councilmember Miles, Miles, Miles requested rescind Resolution Number 1417, appointing Jack Bostick as a municipal judge. I need to ask for a motion to rescind that action. Need a second. All in favor? Y'all no votes with me? Next item on the agenda is Councilmember Ballard, joined by Councilmember Miles, requesting rescind abolishment of the position created for the city of Winterstruck. I need to ask for a motion to rescind that action. Miles made a motion. Chris made a second. All in favor? Y'all no votes with me? Next item on the agenda is approved minutes from November 3, 2025, regular meeting and the organizational meeting. I need to know if anybody's got a question or comment how those meetings, those minutes are going to be recorded. If not, I need to ask for a motion and a second to approve. Gina made a motion, Tim a second. All in favor?
Permits?
The next item on the agenda is park board reapportment. And the next one after that is theater board appointments. I'm going to ask that we table these two appointments because we're not ready to really, we're not ready to make those appointments in those two positions. So I'm going to ask the council to let me table that to the next council meeting. All in favor of motion, second. Gina, Chris made a motion. Y'all in favor, okay. I'm going to table those two items to the next council meeting. Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. Councilmember Ex officio, we, Keith Pollard, Councilman Pollard served in that position. We need, I need a council member that will serve on that planning and zoning board. If y'all got a preference amongst you, who, if anybody, all of you want volunteers to be on there, or one of you want to volunteer? Y'all okay with, uh, serving in that position on the planning and zoning board? Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to let him serve on that planning board. Try and get a motion and a second. Gina made a motion, Miles, second. All in favor? Next item on the agenda is we got the fire chief Blake here for about some new hires and a possible fire station.
Thank y'all. I have a recommendation for two individuals for what we've been, the jobs we've had posted out. I know last meeting we hired Ashton Odom. Since that hire, we had Jeremy Goine, who turned in his two-week resignation and is no longer with us. So back to starting, back over my three. But the two I have bringing out is Trevor Lynch. He is uncertified. And then Philip Pratt. Philip Pratt is a certified guy coming from Hable.
You're asking for the council to allow you to make these two hires?
Yes, sir.
If the council have any question for Mr. Pollard, based on his recommendation and his study of these two individuals, I'll ask the council to allow him to go ahead and make these two hires for fire. I need a motion and a second. Got a motion from Brad and a second from Gina. All in favor?
When will we start?
Trevor's going to come tomorrow to start his back work. And then Philip's going to work out. I didn't know this was the title. So I'm going to get him tomorrow. I don't know how that works.
You got something else?
Yeah, so we need, uh, hey, you David, you want to go over this for your packet on the fire station grant? Currently, I'm trying to work on funding for fire station number two at Exit 30. I guess I have two different recommendations to ask y'all. The first one would be for the council to allow me to continue to pursue a grant or the funding on fire station two. I think at the max, we would be, have to max 10% to 20% almost the grants that I'm, that we're working on. But there's different avenues. I've been working closely with our state and federal representatives and officials that we have. But if the council allow me, I would like to continue to really push this harder on this grant.
The council say Paul, we can pursue and try and get funding for this second fire station at Exit 30.
I mean, you're asking to pursue the grant. Do you have a timeline once the grant is approved? Or do you, I mean, what kind of timeframe are you thinking that we might have made that fire station up there?
Sooner the better is from what I get told. What I can tell you is that I need all this done. I need a lot of stuff. And one of the things that we're about to talk about is architectural paperwork before the state goes into session to be able to get it. On a perfect, what we used to call blue sky days at the MA office, you know, that's nothing happening, blue sky day. Maybe we see the funding and we start working on it this time next year. But that's on a blue sky day and...
Best-case scenario?
Best-case scenario.
Yes.
Worst-case scenario, two, two-ish years, two, three. There's a lot that's going to be involved with this. I mean, we're looking at a big ticket item price tag.
This grant line is going through what, what department?
It's going to go through different departments. One is going to be working with NACOG, ADECA, Senator Gudger's office, Representative Estes. I've got a meeting with Representative, or Congressman Hatterhall Monday. I'm pursuing several different avenues to acquire this thing.
You're trying to compile different...
Yes.
Different groups for that grant?
Yes.
And you said you've already contacted or in contact with NACOG?
Yes. I spoke with Heath Ginn today on the ARC.
They seem favorable with it.
Yes. He's going to do some checking on me to see about the, the grant ceilings on ARC. But he was confident that we should be able to get some of them raised. A lot of this, I'm going to, I have recommendations from Senator Gudger.
Okay, I was wondering how, what he, if you've been speaking.
Yeah, I've talked to him just about every day on this project.
All right, gets the council okay with him moving forward with this, with the grant process? I need to ask for a motion probably, and a second to proceed with. Got any more?
I should keep, Chris made a motion, a second, Miles, and all in favor?
You got anything else?
Yes, the architectural paperwork. But this is one thing that Senator Gudger told me I needed to have to pursue the funding from his office. So I've been working with architect to get heard quote on how much it would cost to get the drawings done and a general budget outline. So it'd be a total of $9,000 we'd be paying to hear, roughen up into three different pavements. The first one being now, $3,000 more midway through than another $3,000 when finished. On the bottom there, with these, we would get an architectural site plan, a building floor plan, four building elevations and a building section, a general budget outline. And the one more thing that's still put on here today, we would also get a 3D rendering of what the station will look like.
Okay.
This is one of the things that I was told that I, if anything, I absolutely needed this.
Okay, we've got to have this in our core.
Yes.
But will this money that we spend be able to use toward our mansion?
Yes, and if it will help, I mean, I can have something to call state of the room with.
If they would let him go ahead and hire this architectural firm to do these drawings for this grant process, I need to ask for a motion.
Is this the only one we got it from, or did we shop it anywhere?
I shopped everywhere and I called, so first thing I did, I called the state board of architects and got recommendations from them. And this one was the one that was, I got the most recommendations from. So that's who I went with because she is a local person. She's very easy to kind of contact with. And to be honest with you, when the board of architects says this was the one I would choose, that's the one we'll go with.
I mean, for that, I would think that's some kind of favor for that price for what all you're getting for it. But I mean, I kind of...
Yes, from what I get told, most time drawing, you get all that's 20-plus thousand dollars when we're getting it.
Blake, can you kind of explain why it's important to have another fire station down there for people I don't know?
So the importance of a fire station at Exit 30, first and foremost, the one thing everybody can understand is that it will affect the insurance ratings. Right now with our ISO score, the one thing that we are getting hit hard on is a second fire station. That is the biggest thing because response times matter. Leave us, a few test meetings ago, we were talking about why they take the truck out, the bumper out everywhere. It's because time matters. The way near the construction is, it burns hotter and faster. And the closer you are, that's what the insurance companies looks at, how close is that fire station? What's the time that you can get there? What is the capabilities of which it can use? One part of it, when y'all were talking infrastructure of growth, one of the things that companies look at and businesses look at, is there fire protection near me? How, how is my insurance going to be affected before I come?
Yeah, I mean, you, because of what you've already got there and not counting what's coming, it's a pretty big load to store with you. You've got one truck stop, another truck stop coming, two gas stations, the Tiffin Service Center, hotel house, hotel. Of course, we know there's a couple restaurants that's looking already. So I can, I can see the need for it. Especially if Gewin needs one, one hotel. I mean, I'm not comparing us to them, but I can, I can see the need for it. Especially if we can get it funded.
Yes.
That's the key. Nobody else got any more questions? Did I get a motion and a second? Gina made a motion, Tim, second. All in favor to leave?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Brett Boston here for the new hire. Can he get in the room?
I would like to hire Austin Selanigan back to the police department. He worked for me the first time for four years, left, went to the mines, decided that the mine wasn't for him. I could have kind of decided that for him before he left, but he needed to go down there and try it. When he come back, he went to Hamilton, worked there just a little while. Said he was kind of embarrassed to call me after he had left. No reason for that. Austin did a good job for me. He called and asked me could he come back. I told him that it would be, I'd have to take a vote for the department because he left. And all the guys voting him in to have him back. And then I called and spoke with Chief Carter at Hamilton because, Mayor, as you know, we worked pretty hard to get the chiefs together, working on the same page and working together. And as much as I wanted Austin to come back, I wouldn't do it at the detriment of ruining the relationship between Chief Carter. So he and I had a very good conversation Saturday. And he said he wanted him to be where he was happy, wanting him to be where his heart was. He lives here. His kids go to school here. This is where God was on us, where he always wanted us. I'd like to bring him back.
You see, go ahead.
Did he leave on good standing?
He did.
You're talking about with us or them?
Well, just with, with Sam Hamilton?
Both.
Have you discussed contract with him this time?
Uh, I have not. I, I just told him that he would be coming back on probation here.
How long are you on with probation?
The handbook and our SOP says six months, but I can extend that.
I'm not so much worried about it being over six months as I am with contract. I mean, we've already, our investment with him's already made, and we got to invest more because he's coming back. We got to invest more in him for his uniforms, equipment that bring him up to speed.
No, sir. He's still, got his uniform.
You're still down how many?
I'll be down one.
After this?
Yes, sir.
I've never had any complaints about him when he was in, as an officer. And I understand people, you know, try to better themselves or whatever, and understand sometimes realize that they have made a mistake. But I think it says a little bit for the leadership here for him to realize that he has messed up and tried another, another department and come back. Because initially, I mean, I had the discussion with Brett, you know, because I was, I called him away, not working, but he was with us four years, correct?
Yes, sir. And, and it's not anything that's happened. Actually, he's got a day shift position there. He's coming back to a night shift position here with West Bay.
All right, based on Brett's recommendation, I'm okay with if the council is to allow him to toss his wagon back and work here to PD.
Is it full-time, right? Correct. Full-time?
Yes, sir.
Motion to allow him to hire. That motion from Brad and the second from Miles, all in favor? You got anything else, Brett?
No, sir. Thank y'all.
Next item on the agenda is Exit 30 Corporate District. Me and Todd has had some discussions on this with some of our other people that's involved in it. And we need to have some more discussion before we're actually ready to move forward with this. So I'm going to ask to table this possibly, possibly for the next, possibly for the next council meeting, but I'm not going to guarantee that. But we've got a meeting Friday. That's going to shed some light and see if we need to move forward with that. So if that's okay with the council and we table that. The next item on the agenda is, which, that Resolution 1418 goes with that, is that Resolution 1418 goes with that?
11 goes with...
We'll move 11 in front of 10 to go ahead and table it as well because it goes with what we're going to do with the corporate district. So go ahead and off that off. And while I'm at it, since I'm tabling stuff, let me just go ahead and go with 12 on paving projects. I got those bids back for that paving project, and I would like to discuss that with the council before we take action to go ahead and move forward with that. I'm not satisfied with it. I've had a little bit of talk with Todd. There's some, there's a few issues that I want to see if we can maybe do something different with the way we move forward with that project. The bid law, of course, is part of it. The amount, the amount of paving that we want to do, it puts us in a certain bid requirement. We might want to consider doing it, looking at it another way to help on the bid requirement. I'm not, I'm just not satisfied with the way that paperwork come in. And I apologize for not having it for y'all tonight to give to you, but I just, right now at this, at this point, I don't want us to vote on that. I will have it in hand for y'all to, I'll bring it up to you, my ideas and see if it's something I think we can move forward with doing the next time. But we all still, which y'all go with that in old business, but I'm going to go ahead and table that paving project if that's fine to, with the council. This council, these two members here, these three members here is not aware of the roads that we've got anyway. I'd kind of like to put them in on some of this paving project so where they won't be in the dark on it and then decide, explain why I'm doing what I'm doing.
Do we need to take action on all of those?
I don't think so. Just table them, we're good, don't we, Todd?
Excuse me?
Oh, you in the refrigerator?
No, I was looking for something over here. What did you say?
I said, we're okay not to vote on table, no.
Yeah, because we're going, just, just pass them. I don't think we have to table them. I just think we just pass them because I'm not sure when, when we're, I, I need, we, I probably need to meet with our newer council members and let them, and kind of go over with them because we, this was all started under the old administration. And most of the older council members know exactly what we're doing and the new ones don't. And rather than just, it's, it's kind of complicated. So we're not in a hurry. So, you know, give me a few weeks to sit down with them and go over the structure of this deal and what we're talking about would be beneficial. So I know Miles and I spoke Friday and I gave him like a crash course in this, we need to, we need to...
Y'all okay? Todd discussed it with y'all before we move forward.
Sir.
On all these, what I'm trying to table, we're going to discuss it forward and we want to get y'all more involved in it before we ask you to make a decision. You okay with that?
Right. Yes, sir.
I'm going to go back to the number 10, employee pay evaluation. Earlier this week, I sent everybody a, my idea of what a, what we needed to do for is evaluate the pay scale for the employees. Has everybody got a copy, had a copy of that? I need to ask the council if they will, Mr. Councilmember Ballard asked Blake if he could look over it a little bit. But I told him to do what the majority wanted to do for his tabling it because there again is something that we've been working on prior to the new council members coming on. I just, I guess I need to take a poll from the council. Chris has already stated that he would like to have some time to look over it, kind of how you, or you...
Can we go to executive session and talk about it?
If you want, yeah, we can.
Mayor, what about... You can do it, you'll be coming back in the session.
Mayor, what about a work session?
Well, I'm going, that's what I was, that's what I was going to, I'm taking a poll. So you'd like to discuss it more tonight and you'd like to have a work session. What about y'all three? How, where are y'all at? Do you want to move forward or you want to discuss it further?
I want to move forward with it, so I would be willing to discuss it, discuss it in a executive session and come back and vote on it because I want something actioned tonight.
We can go to executive session, we can still table it after.
Yeah, she's wanting to come back in and possibly do a vote after executive session.
Yeah, I would like to go to executive session and talk, at least discuss it.
My question was only if we can afford it, then that's good. I've looked over it.
So do we want, do I need to ask for a motion to go into executive session? If that's what you're, y'all will just honor Miles's request?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to, y'all, since we're coming back out, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session, discuss this pay evaluation, pay scale evaluation. So I need to ask for a motion. I got one from Miles, he's making that motion, second from Gina, all in favor to go into executive session. We will be returning back to regular session for the last, for that item possibly, and then the other three items that's on the agenda. All in favor? I did ask for all in favor. Regular session. Got one from Brad and second from Gina, all in favor? All right, the next item we had on the agenda is employee pay evaluation. I need to ask for a motion to accept that pay evaluation, evaluation that I sent out two or three days ago. I need to ask for a motion. If the council has no questions or comments about my proposal, I need to ask for a motion to pass that pay evaluation. I got a motion from Brad, second, but Tim, all in favor?
Mayor, I'm, I'm going to bear no, for the lack of time and our time back in the seat here, it's been two weeks. And I know it's been a table previous administration, so I don't have to wait, so obviously we're not...
I like to be in, I don't want to vote. What's the, my vote?
Two no's and three four, okay. All right, next item on the agenda, which Todd is looking for some stuff, he's got to go. Next item on the agenda is old business. I'm going to, Chris, you got any old business? Miles? Brad? Gina? I've already discussed the paving projects, which have been on my old business list. And the next item on the agenda is approved accounts payable. Does anybody got any question or comments how those minutes is going to be, I mean, how many minutes, is enough questions about the accounts payable? If not, I need to ask for a motion to pay them. Miles made a motion. Brad, second, all in favor? See, Todd's got that. What is it? What is it? Now go ahead and...
Just asking for permission to join that litigation?
Litigation.
That SSCT litigation?
SSET.
Is the...
All right, the, I need, do I need to amend the agenda to put that on there? All right, I need, do I, you want me to amend the agenda to put that on there?
Well, I mean, we need to consider it, they need to consider it, the county, the county is asking us to consider it, and I don't know if we want to...
I'd like to table it, I know, or just, when we get the paperwork, read it, and then next meeting.
Y'all familiar what it is? What we did, we've done it the last, it's storm for storm.
No, 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 no.
It's not?
No, this is, this is that litigation, that litigation, SSUT litigation, you know, that the city of Tuscaloosa filed along with Mountain Brook. This is a grouping of counties and cities, smaller cities, that are, that are filing as defendants, that are intervening as defendants against Tuscaloosa's plan because Tuscaloosa, the Tuscaloosa-Mountain Brook plan would have the effect of decreasing the SSUT that rural communities get. Yes, it would focus it into, and they're asking us to, to join as, intervene as a defender in that with the other rural counties and municipalities in the state of Alabama against the Tuscaloosa-Mountain Brook litigation. That's what they're asking, and I, it's a resolution that, that our commissioner gave us and asked us to consider, and wanted me to bring it up here tonight, but I, I really have liked, I'm like, Miles, I, I would like, I didn't get it till today, and I would like to know a little bit more about it before we decide whether we will sign on or not.
Page on the agenda for next time?
We, we may on the second, don't we? Okay, and I think he needed to pick the third or the fourth, what he was saying is, is a deadline they were trying to make, is what he told me. Yeah, so I mean, we'd have time to do it.
I'd like you to go ahead prior to it and get a copy.
And get it to everybody. I will.
All right, so if we ain't got nothing else, nobody else got anything else? Next item on the agenda is adjourn, I need to ask for a motion to adjourn. Brad made a motion, Gina, second, all in favor. Thank y'all for coming. Anybody, Brett, is Brett out there?
Hi, my name is Dana here at State Bank and Trust. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve you since 1907. Thank you for allowing us to serve you.
This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gewin with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Gewin and Fayette.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gewin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck Spann here with Spann Hardware and Equipment in downtown Winfield. Hope you're having a happy fall. As we move into the fall season, any of your needs you have around my house as far as lawn cleanup, whether you need blowers, sweepers, lawn mowers to chop them up with, or just handheld tools for projects around the house, come see us, we'll help you out. Span Hardware and Equipment, downtown Winfield.
At home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner at 205-487-4327.
Hi, I'm Kevin Bradford, State Farm agent in Winfield, and I'd like to introduce my team to you. To my left, to the far left is Beth Turner, and next to her is Ann Barnes, and to my right here is Mr. Todd Estes. We'd like to invite you to call us or come see us at any time for any of your insurance needs. We're happy to help you in any way. We appreciate your business, and we look forward to hearing you and doing business with you. Thank you.